Good evening, I will call this meeting to order. If we could please rise for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Allenson.
Here.
Carmody. Fishbein.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Regan.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa. Marone.
Here. Alright, first item on the agenda is a certificates of recognition for the Lyman Hall Boys Indoor Track State Championship. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, we have cause for celebration tonight. The Lyman Hall High School Boys Indoor Track Team secured the Class M State Championship title. It was an exhilarating display of athleticism and teamwork. The Boys Indoor Track Team emerged victorious as Class M State Champions solidifying their dominance in the realm of track and field. Led by an exceptional roster of talented athletes, the team showcased their prowess at the Class M level. With noteworthy performances from students, we're going to hear their names all tonight. Their journey to victory continued at the state open where standout performances by several of the team members propelled the team to secure all state honors. These performances further solidified their top standing as top contenders in the state. And they went on to the New England Championship where they continued their impressive performances. And so we have certificates of appreciation. It looks like coaches may have brought some type of apparel. So, we have certificates.
Welcome to join down there.
Yes, I'm speaking. Good evening, I'm Coach Palmer. I'm just here to honor the guys tonight as far as the season progressed and everything like that. We have some gear for you to be the state champions. This year was an exceptional season. We had some kids win New England's. We had athletes place personal best. We had several athletes, nine this year, compete at Nationals and qualify for Nationals. And we had four students, athletes, place top six in the country earning All-American status. So it was a big season and majority of the kids, as you can see, are returning for next year or competing at the next level. So it's exciting to see and congratulations on your season, guys. Lucas DiCrescenzo. Christopher Drescher. Aaron Rich. Gabe Toppin. Owen Rich. Ethan Rich. Quinn Murphy. Thomas Conklin. Tim Conklin. Evan Doobie. Austin McWeeny. Peter Gunarez.
Alright, let's hear it for it.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
I appreciate it.
There he is.
I just have to comment because as you may or may not know, I teach at Lyman Hall. And most of these gentlemen I've had in class. And if not, I also work with as a lacrosse coach. And during the course of the last couple of years, as they've done what they've done, it's just been a source of excitement and pride at Lyman Hall. But what I just simply want to say, because you don't have an opportunity to do this that much. These are just incredible young men. And, you know, I am so proud to have worked with them and know them and see what they accomplish. They're just really good kids. And I just, I have the luxury of being able to sit up here and say this. So I'm going to take advantage of it. So I congratulate all of you guys. Great job. You're great guys and I wish you the best. And thank you for representing Wallingford and your school and your community as you have. And they're very fast. Thank you.
Thank you. And gentlemen, before you head out. So I ran in high school and I've run on and off over the course of my life. And the thing that non-runners don't understand is how lonely running is. Because when you're out there and you're having a bad day, there's no one to pick you up. Like the team's nice to you, but there's no one to pick you up. It's just you versus the universe, right? And so it's like you either got it or you don't got it on that day. And so the funny thing is, you'll find as you get older, that the things that you're learning from running now will sort of be the men that you become when you're an adult, right? And sort of that determination, the ability to stick to it, when it hurts, you just keep going. Those are the kinds of things, you know, that get you through life. So congratulations on behalf of the town and best of luck. And you're welcome to stay with us, but if you would like to depart, you're more than welcome.
Alright, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve or accept consent agenda items 3A through 3U, 3W as amended, and 3X.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I believe one of the other ones was amended as well.
V has been removed from consent.
Yeah, V has been removed from consent, so we'll talk about that in a second.
We'll do that amendment next.
Alright, so we have a second for Counselor Regan?
I second, yep.
Okay, alright. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion is unanimous. Item 3V was removed from the consent agenda. So before we get to a motion on this, so I represented to some members of the... So it read "accept, apply for, and accept a grant." And I had represented to some members of the group that I had overlooked that at the agenda meeting. But in fact, I didn't overlook it. It was written intentionally that way. So, you know, you have the opportunity to amend it now if you see fit. But after the motion, I'll let Janice explain the rationale behind why this was written the way it was. Can I get our motion on 3V?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing Mayor Savoni to apply for and accept a grant for the restoration of the historic train station.
Second. Okay, discussion on the motion. Counselor Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just was curious about the item itself as it relates to the train station RFP. As it relates to any money that we've spent in there so far with respect to any kind of upkeep or changes in code. So I was just hoping to get more information about the overall process and sort of understand how they all kind of meet up and where we're going with it. So, thank you.
Pardon my rudeness, Mr. Crouch, if you could introduce yourself for the record.
Don Crouch, Economic Development Specialist. Pretty much this grant is for the exterior only of the historic train station.
Thank you. That was, I was just, I was curious just to know exactly how all of these things are going to match up and what the logistics are with respect to this and the information that was in.
So the grant administrator did give me their letter of intent. So you did have an earlier memo, I think, from Rob where Volteritis, where he explained what was going on. But the listed exterior improvements are the brick replacement, repainting, brick and brownstone, coin repair replacement, door replacement, window repair restoration, paint, window trim, standing seam metal roof or tile roof replacements, replace gutters. Those are the items that were listed on there. And since obviously it's a historic building, this grant is something that's available to you. It is a reimbursable grant. You have to spend the money first. And the maximum would be $200,000 with a 20-year commitment for the preservation restrictions on that.
Did you want... Also, Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, I'm the one who raised the concern about the "and/accept" because the backup that we were given for the item, I guess is boilerplate from another project. It's an example of what could happen.
Well, I think when you're talking about a state document, that's the document that they give you. That it's going to be in line with that. And the only reason we put and authorize the acceptance of it is because that's the resolution that they gave us to do as part of the grant application. So I wouldn't have put that in there but for that, that it appears to be a requirement of the grant.
Okay, so the concern from my perspective is there are portions of at least the example that may be implicated considering that the utilization of this property is in flux, right?
Correct.
So for instance, there's an express portion that says the property shall not be subdivided. As part of what we anticipate doing here, I don't, there's no definition of subdivision, right? We're obviously, I think, the way we've talked, we're not going to be like conveying a portion of the property. I don't know what is contemplated by subdivided though. If we say to, let's just say merchants, you know, we're going to have booths and, you know, you can set up your food stand or something like that, you know, is that subdivision? I don't know.
I wouldn't interpret it that way. I think, you know, subdivision would actually be a division of the property itself. But I mean, I understand that it's not a defined term in that document.
So the other, another concern is that we are representing that we're going to utilize the money for exterior preservation. However, it appears that the agreement that we would be entering into would curtail our, in some way, shape, or form, what happens interiorly. So, once again, we don't know what we're doing with this property.
Correct. And that's really why I brought, that's why I filed my, gave you my memo with that. Because I wanted you to understand that this is, they'll have some say in the interior. And, you know, because there's been no determination as to what the end use is going to be. Let me find the language that the grant application is going to use, which I thought I had flagged. It's written broadly enough by the grants office. Let me see if I can, oh, here it is. So in the grant coordinator's memo to the mayor August 2nd, it states that it will say, "Envisions at the renovated historic building as a community destination with space to showcase local food, art, cultural, and other community events." So, I think the attempt in the application is to define it broadly given that we haven't made a final decision as to what the actual use is going to be. I believe this is due in October, is that correct? I think this is due in October. Let me check.
It's due October 18th.
So I would think, I mean, we can, you know, I think that is pretty broadly, a broad scope. But yes, when you enter into this agreement, they do have a say or they do have some say in what you end up doing on the inside.
So, you know, I'm all in favor of applying for the grant. But my problem is, we're already having problems with this property, right? My understanding is that nobody bid on doing something with this property, even though we put it out to RFP. And now we are through this process maybe making that number of people that presently don't exist more finite, you know? Because if at the end of the day, we have to say, "Well, your usage isn't going to fit what the state has approved." Because I heard "cultural" and stuff like that. And, you know, if a restaurant comes in and says, you know, and we contemplate that, the response may be, "Well, you can't do a restaurant because it's not culture-y, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't fit." So...
I mean, I know of no reason why we couldn't add some additional specific uses that could be a possibility to the application.
I would feel more comfortable, I reviewed what you gave us and I was like, "Well, you know, that is limited." So, you know, are we, I mean, I understand that the state isn't going to give money unless the town can show buy-in and, you know, us just approving the application doesn't show the buy-in. So, is it appropriate? You know, it doesn't, it isn't due till October. We got plenty of time. Is that something that maybe we can work on the language?
As far as I know, I mean, I haven't been, I'm not the author of this document, but I would think so, given that now, you know, here we are. We're close to being into September. So I think that, you know, if we, I mean, you probably could brainstorm and come up with some added uses that you want to add. You know, certainly adding the possibility that there would be a private party use of the interior. I mean, we may keep it something as broad as that. I mean, I don't...
I think the grants coordinator was looking to have the resolution approved. I know there's going to be some times in September where she's not going to be available. So I think that's the reason it came in August. But I think there definitely could be some broad strokes in that language for the use. And also, I think without that resolution, it's kind of like you get dinged a couple of points for not having that. But yeah, I agree, it should be a broad generic term for that usage.
And we wouldn't know what language, because the state essentially, if we approve this as it presently exists, at the end of the road, the state, I would think, is going to produce a document to us, sign this in exchange for the deal, right? And this is the time to really deal with what those confines are, I think.
I mean, I think we could put, I think we could add language stating that the possibility of leasing the interior space to a commercial... I mean, I don't know how broadly you want to say it. You're certainly looking for, you're looking for someone who would use the space, if it's somebody other than government, who would in fact, it would be something that would bring people into the downtown. And that's what you're looking for, right? So if you, if, I think we could frame it in that type of language. So we don't want an office in there, for example, you know, you don't want something like that. But you want something that will be of interest, a destination for people to come to downtown Wallingford. I think it could be written that way.
And to give you a little bit on the timeline, so January 2025, they're going to make the allocations and then written notifications of the awards after that. And then deadline to submit signed contract and final scope of work is March 28th. So there is that flexibility between January and March to hash out kind of the final wording on the resolution for the usage.
Well, no, this is for the grant though, you have to put this in this.
Yeah, I'm just looking for all the pieces to be together. So if we, you know, if somebody comes to us and says, "I want to have this usage." And we say, "Well, you know, we're going to redo the outside because we've applied for this grant." But you can't do all that stuff that you're looking to do. I mean, that sort of like constrains us. So, you know, as it presently lies, you know, I would have no problem with applying for. But I understand the position that we need the "and/accept" and I don't know.
I think what done is that you, if you don't have that part of it, then it's not, you're not closer to being ready to go as I think the state wants. That's the language they gave us to use. So I wasn't going to touch their language when they said that that's what you're supposed to commit to. Because I mean, it is a highly competitive grant. So they're certainly going to take those projects that are closer to ready to go and complete, where the application is complete.
Yeah, just, I mean, I'm going to defer in a little bit. But I wouldn't curtail government from utilizing the, I want as broad as possible, right? So, you know, not that I envisioned this town doing anything with the property, but I don't know. I don't know what the future brings. So I don't know, Mr. Chairman, how you want to deal with this issue. But as it presently exists, I can't vote for this language. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Testa.
Good evening, Don, how you doing?
Good.
Okay. I'm still trying to wrap my head around the concept of making for more finite something that doesn't exist. That was what was raised by my colleague, that we're going to agree to put restrictions on something that doesn't exist. More finite, but there's nobody interested. So that just, that made no sense to me. Here's, here's how I see it. I understand that we didn't get any responses to the RFP. Fine. So now we move on. So now it's in our hands. We talk about what we want to do with this, which I've always talked about. I'd like to have a say in it. And I remember not long ago, there was a plan to, in a wonderful presentation, to do restoration work, historical restoration work on the building. So to me, this grant has popped up. And again, remember, as much as I argue with the previous and at times the current administration on procedures and how I think things should go, there's always, there's frequently a public criticism of, "You didn't, you didn't go for a grant. You missed a grant. Why didn't you go for a grant?" Well, here's a grant. And this grant is to do work on the exterior of this historically important building. And whatever we do with this, short of selling it, which I unequivocally oppose to, whatever we do with this building, we need to fix it up. And in order to fix it up, we have to fix it up to historical standards. And a grant popped up where we could put some money into it to fix the exterior. My questions coming into this night's meeting was, what restrictions are we putting upon ourselves by applying for this grant? And I've heard nothing that bothers me. Because whatever they're talking about... And I've heard nothing that bothers me. Because whatever they're talking about, it refers to usage, usages that I would like to see. But however, so if we refuse the grant opportunity, and then we decided to go forward, and I'll tell you right now, I see us going forward as a town. I don't see us going forward with a, with a developing partner. We tried that, it didn't work. It may work again, it may work again, but however we move forward, when we come up with some kind of idea, it's going to cost some money. And some of that money is going to be related to restoration of the exterior of this building, and it will be town money. And this grant can provide that town money, irrespective of what you do inside. So I don't understand opposition to the grant, now that I've heard about it a little bit. And then we could talk about what we're going to do with this, with this building. And if we move forward and we find ourselves going down a path with somebody else, some other investor, some other plan, whatever it might be, and this, we can just deny this. We can refuse this. We're only restricted if we take the money. So we can apply for it, we have a couple of months apparently to look at it, and if it turns out that we've decided to go somewhere where, that might conflict with the conditions of this grant, then we deny, we refuse the grant. We back out. Maybe we can't, but you know we can.
Well, you can just technically say that the resolution commits you to going forward if you're awarded the grant. That would make, that would makes it unusual from other grants where, which we have done. That's what they're asking you to commit to, that you want it, and you're going to carry it out if you get it. I mean, if it were...
If you get it.
Yeah, if you get it.
What happens if you change your mind? What, do they fine you?
I don't, I don't, I don't see any penalty.
I don't mean to be flip.
No, I understand that.
I'm saying, we have a couple of months to talk about it, but something's in front of us now that says, hey, we could repair the outside, and like we did in the past.
Right.
And so let's, let's at least do that.
So it'd be, it would be very simple if this application were simply for the exterior in terms of the commitment on the restrictions that you have to comply with, right? So we have to do those renovations, they need to be done.
Yes.
So this grant can provide some funding for that, hopefully the $200,000, but it could be less. But this is different in the sense that it has more control than that. Now, I do believe that this grant, projects that have used this grant, in fact, have had restaurants and whatnot inside them, I think. I mean, I'm not, I didn't handle this...
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'd have to check with the grants coordinator, but to clarify, though, even with the, the previous developer, that was just on the interior with the developer, and the town was always looking at maintaining and preserving the exterior.
Exactly. And my point is, what I foresee us doing, anything we choose to do fits in with the, the restrictions that this grant is, is putting in place. I don't want us selling it. So, and I don't want us calling someone to say, hey, come on and put a restaurant in there. I want this to be used as a community resource. So for me, I see an opportunity to get $200,000 to repair the exterior and move forward with plans for the interior. I think it's, it's foolish and irresponsible to refuse it. So I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Attorney Small covered what I had to say, no need to repeat it.
Thank you, Attorney Small. Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Crouch. So if, if we do go accept the grant, we're, we're locked in for 15 years, it looks like, correct, to the terms of the grant?
I believe 20.
Okay. I heard 20, but I thought I saw 15 somewhere, but okay.
That's because that's a sample. So if you get the full $200,000, it's 20.
Okay. I meant, I saw something on here too about interior viewing. So even though we're only going to be doing work on the exterior, they would be able to go into the interior and check that out?
See, you have to have at least 12 days of public viewing yearly. So I mean, if you're using it for a community space, then it would be open in more than 12 days, so...
Okay, so as long as it's, so for example, let's say a restaurant were in there, as long as the restaurant's open to the public, that would be considered public viewing. It doesn't need to be a time set aside.
Correct.
Okay, so that's something we would need to add to a lease, for example?
Yeah, I would, I would expect a, a lease agreement would include a lot of the historic preservation language.
Okay. And then my other question, well, I've, Counselor Tessa will get angry, but what if we, what if we did, what if we did decide in 10 years we wanted to sell it? Then what happens?
I guess they would be...
Let's say we wanted to sell it in 10 years.
I guess the restrictions on the owner would follow, I don't know, that's, that's outside my pay scale.
Yeah, it would actually be on the land records. It would be a condition of any, they'd have to carry that forward and finish the 10 years.
Okay. Okay, thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, other questions? To the public, any questions on this item?
Chairman Maron, if I may?
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Regan, please.
So, looking at grants such as these, they're purposely written to have very nonspecific language. I mean, I'm looking at an example where the stated use can be public recreational activities, community-oriented facilities, municipal services and infrastructure, or other public uses as determined by the municipality through proper legislative processes and in accordance with applicable zoning laws and regulations. Don't those four cover just about everything that we've talked about?
Yeah, so those are the categories that they're looking for it to fall in. I think they're looking probably for a little bit more information than that, as best I can.
Right, but if we build, if we build on each of those four as the, as the possibilities, we should be able to, you know, we're not talking about a car wash.
Right, I agree, I agree with you, yes.
So, so there's not one. We can get down into recreational facilities, we can talk about, you know, possible mixed use for theater usage, et cetera, but, you know, for public usage, that's fine. Private, public-private uses as, you know, as a, you know, back to the grantee seems to be something fairly easy to write into this grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to the public. I believe there's a question in the back? If, if you wouldn't mind, approach the mic. If you would kindly state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Amy Gurgis. I do not live in the town of Wallingford, but I am on the board of an organization that currently is in the town of Wallingford, 68 Quinnipiac Street.
Okay.
Do you want my home address also?
That's also, go ahead.
So this, this application for grant and the fact that this building had previously gone up for a bid, and I may be using incorrect terminology, so forgive me, but, so I'm making a couple of assumptions, that the grant is approved for the exterior, grant is applied for and approved for the exterior, and there's nothing that mentions the interior. In the event that this is approved and the interior could be possibly leased, I've heard some mention made of what can be, can go in there, I haven't heard any mention made of what can't go in there. Is there a possibility, possibility that the interior would be subdivided within, I know that term was mentioned earlier, but possible, like individual, like you mentioned, community, community events or possible restaurant. I've never been inside the building, I don't know if it's one big open space, or if there's possibility that, you said no offices, but like, would it be able to be partitioned off? Is that a possibility to have separate units within the structure? Because there is some interest on our part of possibly applying for some space there. Again, way possible, but...
So Janice or Mr. Crouch, if you have a, if you could opine?
Yeah, I, I don't know of any prohibition on having multi-uses there, we just have to fall into the right categories, I guess, as far as I know.
Yeah, I think it would all depend on how much the town wanted to invest on the interior to get it to a point to be able to lease it to multiple tenants, but, you know, I'm not sure if the town's willing to look at that or, or not.
So it's a possibility, maybe remote, but that's not a, a deal breaker.
I mean, right now, this is out for RFP, so we were looking for plans to develop the interior, but no plans have been submitted as of yet, so it's kind of all up in the air as far as what it, it could be.
Okay, good. So we can hang on to hope. All right, very good. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? All right, Madam Clerk, would you kindly call a roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Fishmine?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Maron?
I vote yes, and the motion passes.
So you are looking for us to expand the definition that she used for what could possibly go there? You're looking for some broader language?
Well, I think we just voted on the language as...
Of the resolution?
Right.
So do you want her, when we talked about adding some additional language to how she crafted what the use of the building would be, would you like to see it to be broader than that?
Opinions from the council? Mr. Testa?
My, my read on that was that there, you know, when, when people, when government agencies are giving out money, they're, they're very cognizant of what could happen. And when you said subdivision...
I didn't say subdivision.
No, no, I mean, when the, when the idea of subdividing this came up, I thought to myself, well, you could sell it to somebody and they would subdivide it into apartments, for example, for example, or subdivide it into individual freestanding units. And that was the objection that I thought the language was referring to. We don't want you seeing, we don't want to see you doing that. I don't think any of it refers to how you utilize it internally, as far as, you know, turning it into an art space, or a food court, or a, or a performance, you know, et cetera, et cetera. I think the idea was, don't, you know, maintain control, consider the history, and continue to honor it, and don't turn it into a strip mall. Basically, no, basically, that was my, my understanding
Okay, but the...
of that restriction, and maybe I'm off, but I think that's what it is.
The, the application asks you to identify the use. So I, we have to put a use in there. We have no conclusion as to what the ultimate use will be, because that's a work in progress. So the language that I read, that they've, they've written at this point, is a community destination with space to showcase local food, art, cultural, and other community events. Do you view that to be sufficient, or do you want it broadened? That's my question. Otherwise, that's what the language is going to be used.
Personally, I think that covers everything I'd like to see done.
Okay.
I think that's wonderful.
All right, just checking.
No, for me, personally, I'm very happy with that.
Okay, Counselor Laffin?
I was just going to say I trust, as you're negotiating, that you're going to hammer all that stuff out.
Anyone else? Mr. Fishmine?
So as stated earlier, I mean, I think the broader language would be appropriate, but I can't, I mean, Janice, you're really good with language, you know, if you could think of some way to expand this, I would be in support of the initiative. But once again, as I started out with this, I, I don't want the representation through the grant process to be a finite amount of uses, and somebody comes to us...
Give him your mic, please.
Yeah. Somebody comes to us with a use, I mean, we're not, you know, rocket scientists up here, and we're not in the industry, and somebody might come to us with a use, oh, I never thought of that, but that's a good idea, but it doesn't fall within the grant application. So, you know, I, I agree, you know, drawing people to the downtown, I think, is, is an overall desire, but we have categories that are specifically linked up to that. So, I don't know.
Well, let me, let me just say that, whatever we put in the grant application, you know, we can ask permission to change it, that is in the agreement. So you can ask to permission to change it. I just wanted to make sure that it was the right language. So I'll, I'll discuss the language with the grants coordinator, and, you know, maybe we can refine it a little bit to make sure, and maybe there's some guidance on the state level for that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, because at the end of the day, we are ceding whatever limited power that we have to the administration to accept, right? It doesn't come back to us. We don't have that opportunity to reject, as I heard one of my colleagues talk about. That will never come to us. So what's before us here tonight is to apply and to give the administration the power to accept without coming back to us. So, you know, as I said before, I'm in favor of applying, I just don't want to restrict us. So that, that was my quandary with, with voting on this thing, but, you know, if the language that's before us is, is what we voted on, I just, I just don't want to be restricted in the future. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other opinions?
Yes. Everything that happens with this will come be back to us. Of course it will, we'll be signing contracts, we'll be, we'll be agreeing to things. It will always come back to us. We will have the opportunity to review what comes back to us. And you voted no, so you can't talk about it.
Counselor Tada?
Thank you. Maybe just to clarify, I think the, the wording, which was why it was changed, the "and accept," if I'm understanding Counselor Fishmine, the way I'm reading it, that's, that's where the issue is. So once this goes out, because we voted to apply, I'm sorry, we voted to authorize the mayor to apply and accept, we're done now. So I believe that's where the, that's where the issue lies. Thank you.
Mayor?
You're done only with respect to the grant application, but you're not ceding control of the building?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, Janice, does that give you the feedback that you were looking for? Not really? Gentlemen, don't get testy yet, we have a long night ahead of us. All right, moving on to the next item, public question and answer period. Any questions from the public for the council? Keeping in mind that you'll have time to talk about the individual agenda items when they come up. Going once? Going twice? All right, moving on to item number six, discussion of old business. Ms. Small, do you have an update on the Hidden Brook Lane situation?
Yes, we are in receipt of an ASBilt. It has been under review by the town engineer and town planner. We do have some questions and comments. Town engineer and the town planner are out looking at one of the properties in particular, just to see if there were some current issues with that property. And so at this point, we're going to submit comments and questions back to the developer and the engineer that drafted the ASBilt, and we'll go from there. Not, let's see, how do I want to say this? More positive than one was expecting. It's the best I can do.
Excellent, well, sounds like progress. Thank you very much. Item number, I'll take a, a motion on item number seven, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we open a public hearing to consider an act on the following ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Appropriating $905,000 for the Replacement of Boilers at Lyman Hall High School and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds of the Town and Notes in Anticipation of Such Bonds in the Note Not to Exceed $905,000 to Finance Said Appropriation."
Second.
Okay, so the motion was for the ordinance, not just to conduct a public hearing, correct?
Uh, correct.
All right. Discussion on the motion from the council. All right, we'll open the public hearing. Does anyone from the public have comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Back to the council. Okay, let's have a voice vote on this. All in favor of the, this ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to number eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we conduct a public hearing and approve the ordinance, I'm sorry, the amendment to the seasonal outdoor dining ordinance as presented with this agenda.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if anybody's here. I said Justin Rosetti's here for the building department on this item. Is that fair?
Correct.
Okay. If I could ask him some questions about, I think it's his department that would be involved.
Mr. Rosetti, would you like to come up to the dais? Good evening, sir. If you could introduce yourself for the record? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosetti. Just, you got the microphone, just, I don't know, it should be able to pick you up, but I don't know if there's a button there. I'm trying to figure out, you know, I get more complaints about the lack of separation between the dining area and where the regular public is supposed to be able to access. What's the status of that in the downtown area? It appears that it's not being enforced. Is that accurate, or?
That's not accurate. We have not received any complaints that there have been any-
Well, I've spoken to six people in the last two weeks that have told me that they have complained. So I believe they called the mayor's office, but-
Do you know what the, okay, well, I haven't received any complaints. I, early in the season, I painted a green line, and that's the four foot that's required by state statute. That's also enforced by the police, because it's a state statute. And that seems, there doesn't seem to be any problem. There wasn't any problem back when we first enacted the-
The microphone's not picking you up, yeah. Because I know-
Is that better?
Residents of the town that are calling me want to hear this, so you said-
Well, again, when, this was all precipitated by COVID and where-
Actually, the outdoor dining ordinance went into place well before COVID. I think it was 1993.
Well, I think the majority of the restaurants that were looking to stay in business realized that they had to serve people outside, and that's really what precipitated the, all of this excessive outdoor dining. You're correct. You've always had outdoor dining. We haven't had any issues. No one's gotten hurt. No one's gotten, no one's been unable to traverse the sidewalks. If someone, it's possible that someone may have put a chair into the lane, and they should be told that it's not. If I received any complaints, I have not received any complaints.
So presently, the ordinance says the outdoor sidewalk dining area must be separated from the remainder of the public sidewalk by a fence, railing, or other divider made of sturdy material.
Could you define sturdy barrier for me?
Well, it certainly isn't, in my experience, a rope or a belt like you have at Burger King, right? I would think that's not sturdy, but certainly if, I'm not aware of the building department coming to the town council ordinance committee and asking us to define sturdy. So, you know, just today, I was driving on Center Street, and there's a restaurant there. Now, they have about, maybe three feet to put a table and the chairs. And of course, that's not realistic. There is no barrier at all. So, you know, if you want to argue about sturdy, we can argue about sturdy, but when nobody has, when, you know, a particular place doesn't have a barrier at all, I don't think we need to get to sturdy. So I'm just trying to figure out, they're supposed to apply to your office on an annual basis for permission to outdoor, because it's our property, it's not theirs, right? It's, we have a duty. And I'm just trying to figure out, because what's before us here tonight is to get rid of that requirement in the ordinance. And I'm getting calls from people, I'm seeing that chairs and tables are certainly over the green line, and I'm trying to figure out why we're taking out the language and what the status of this is.
Well, back in 2015, the town was sued. I was deposed, and the barrier also came up, and it was a requirement put upon only by the town of Wallingford. It's not put upon, it's by the state. The state does not require this as an absolute requirement for outdoor dining. Other towns don't have barriers. In order to have a barrier, you also have to have a stanchion, and those are typically 12 to 16 inches wide, and that's more impotence to having outdoor seating. If you want to have outdoor seating, then my argument would be to make it so that there's as much room as possible. The same barrier that keeps you from having an accident going 40 miles an hour into another car, 40 miles an hour, is the double yellow line, and that does a very good job of keeping you, as your barrier, onto going to oncoming traffic like on Route 5 or other areas. As far as the barriers, there's been complaints that someone doesn't like kegs, they don't like the ropes, they don't like, this is a problem that the town has created because we're requiring barriers. Again, they're a tripping hazard. You're opening yourself up for litigation, as you did back in 2015. There has not been a problem, as I said, right after COVID. I work very closely with Mike Godelski, very fine fire marshal, and we work together. We got everyone up and running. We got them out. We got outdoor, we got the heating appliances out safely. We made sure also that people were able to exit the property. That's why those green painted markings, they also take into account the exiting and also the accessibility factors coming on on the sidewalk. So if there is an issue, if someone were to bring it to my, they could bring it to my attention, I would walk over and tell someone to please move your chair six inches over so that you're on the other side of the green, of the green painted sign. But that's basically it. I don't know that this is a major issue for the town of Wallingford. And if someone has a complaint to you, you can always have them give me a call, because as luck would have it, I'm in charge of outdoor dining. I'm willing to give up that to you or anyone else if you're willing to take on that other endeavor.
Well, it appears, I mean-
But this is something that, it's a practical approach. This is what other towns are doing. And again, because when you have the barrier, we have talked, we talk about a sturdy barrier. I'm also involved in, we go out in the middle of the night, cars are going through buildings, the car that went through Bruegers, the car, the building didn't stop a vehicle. So as far as a sturdy barrier, if this is somehow going to, it's not a safety measure. If we're talking about someone stepping or being beyond the green liner within the four feet of travel, I think that's, it's very possible, but that's a transient issue. Certainly, if it was something that was prevalent and it was reoccurring, then we would tell the people that we would revoke their permission to be on town property.
So it's, I mean, I think Gattanos has done a good job with, you know, their white picket fence they've had since we started this. It's, you know, generally sturdy, it looks nice, that kind of stuff. So if what I'm hearing is you would rather have daily calls as opposed to something that you can readily see, you know, so be it. But we heard, you know, I was here when we passed this stuff, when we created the outdoor dining, right? And, you know, we were told that the state does require it as part of liquor permits. So is that, I mean, you just said that the state doesn't require, and I'm just trying to put those two together.
Well, I was in an ordinance meeting, and it was brought up by one of the counselors who quoted the section and said that that was required only if the town zoning or other agencies required it. So I'm just working off of someone reading the state statute.
Okay, so-
To the best of my knowledge, it's not required.
Okay. I'm just, well, I'll have those individuals that have called me that state they've called the mayor's office to complain about non-enforcement, call you. Well, if this passes, it won't be an issue anymore.
Well, then, as you said, the problems that we create may be our own, may be our own making.
Yeah, I mean, I'll tell you that I was running downtown one time, and because the table was well past the green line, I twisted my ankle, you know? And I, I don't think that our town employees have so much time to, you know, on their hands to be policing, you know? When a restaurant is open, the various restaurants that we have in the downtown area, whether or not a table is over a green line. But certainly, the fenced-in area, like, for example, Gattanos has had, it's virtually impossible, I mean, anything's possible, but, you know, to take your table and to go past that area. But I'm gonna tell you, traditionally, I see it very frequently. And, you know, on Center Street, it's very, very tight. So naturally, somebody is gonna pull their table and their chair past that line. But, you know, so be it. I just, you know, we've spent time at an ordinance committee meeting talking about sturdiness, talking about possibly providing those barriers to restaurants. You know, when, you know, somebody in a wheelchair is, you know, forced to go into the roadway because they can't pass because there's a table, and there's a problem, so be it. But I'm opposed to taking this provision out of this. I think there should be a separation. It's our sidewalk. It's the people's sidewalk. So, you know, which brings me to the other situation, the insurance. I mean, presently, the restaurants are required to have a certain level of insurance, and I would think that they're providing a copy of the ordinance with regard to that. How is that gonna change the situation that they're not required to have barriers anymore? An insurer is now going to be ensuring, I guess, more of the sidewalk.
Well, they're ensuring the area that the restaurant owner is utilizing, which is all that which is not the four feet required by the state of Connecticut.
Understood. But the town's gonna be brought in because they're over the green line. But I'll leave it at that. I mean, I think it's a mistake, and, you know, we've had this in place for a while. Unfortunately, it's not being enforced, and the result should not be just to get rid of it because we're not enforcing it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not aware of calls that have been made to the mayor's office with complaints. I will check with staff tomorrow, but I'm not aware of any. And I'd just like to point out that the ordinance isn't increasing the amount of space available to the restaurant for use. That's not changing. It's just removing the barrier requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Mr. Laffin?
Yeah. Counselor Fishbein, for your reference, the discussion that we, when we retalked about this at the last ordinance meeting, updating to make changes from the one a couple years ago, we discussed how other communities and towns do not have this barrier system going on. And when we looked quick, it was Connecticut General Statute 3022A. Part of it reads, "If not required by fire zoning or health regulations, a fence or wall enclosing such outside areas shall not be required by the Department of Consumer Protection," blah, 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 blah. So that's where all that came from. They may have discussed it a while ago. It may have changed in the meantime, though it was more than 10-plus years ago. I don't know. But I think this makes it easier, it makes it cleaner, and it makes it one less headache for our town officials to have to enforce, when it hasn't, in your experience, really been causing any problems aside from the fact that-
There have been no problems. I think there have been one or two people that are complaining. Some of them are complaining because the person next door, they have their barrier, the other person doesn't have their barrier, you know, what's sturdy, what's not-
Right, it's about the barrier. It's not about anybody, it's about the barrier being there. It's not about anything happening because the barrier's there or not there.
That's correct. For the most part, the restaurant owners are very responsible in their establishments-
Yeah, they don't want to mess this up.
They want to comply, and some of that, if they're over the line, it may be, you know, through their waitstaff that's not properly trained, but once they're told, they do. You're not gonna keep any, you're not gonna keep a bicycle off the sidewalk. You're not gonna keep a person from sitting on the sidewalk. We all have to, you know, just try to be practical and try to make this as user-friendly as a downtown as possible.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Allenson? All right, this was a highly contested item when we talked about this ordinance previously, and really, the discussion was really around what was the appropriate barrier, and people didn't like the, people objected to different kinds of barriers. They wanted them to be consistent and et cetera, et cetera. So this seems to me like an easy way to sort of alleviate this whole issue, by not requiring a barrier. I mean, do we want to be business friendly, or do we want to stipulate, you know, what the, you know, how exactly these people conduct business in town? So this is, this item is a public hearing. Is there any comments from the public on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Any other comment? Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes, motion carries. On to number nine.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we conduct a public hearing and also that we approve the line of duty determination ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, hereby open a public hearing into this change in ordinance. Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any other comments from the council? All right, let's have a voice vote. All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Moving on to number 10.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve a bid waiver to enter into an interlocal contract for cooperative purchasing via the HGAC to purchase a new Frasier ambulance for $303,725.
Second.
All right, motion's made and seconded. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Deputy Chief Wilson.
If you could introduce yourself. Oh, thank you, thank you very much. All right, so questions on this motion? Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief.
Counselor.
You know, we have a report tonight, it's item number 14, which has to do with the, what money is left in ARPA that hasn't been expended. There's $305 there that's appropriated for an ambulance. Is that what we're doing here ultimately?
Yes. There was 300 and, I want to say $330,000 originally appropriated in this fiscal year via ARPA for an ambulance and a power load. I've already power loaded for the structure. So I've already appropriated a piece of that, and this would be the balance here for that $330,000.
Okay, I just want to put the two together. So, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? So I have a couple of questions. So the ambulances, so this is like one of the big boxy ambulances like we typically have in town, correct?
Correct.
I know a lot of the private, a lot of other departments, a lot of the private ambulances have the smaller style ambulances, which are significantly cheaper. Is there a reason why we choose, why we continue with the large ambulance?
I don't, I wouldn't even say they're significantly cheaper. The chassis that we typically use, we've been using the type one ambulance for many years. We carry more equipment on it. We carry different fire rescue equipment also, because we're all integrated inside of the fire department. They have their own gear that gets carried inside of it. It's really more of durability also. It was decided a long time ago that we were gonna either be in a, one of these type other than the van ambulances. Also, the four-wheel drive, the durability, and it's something that I'll be working on with the new chief, is that there's a modular concept with these Frasier ambulances. Now that we have a number of them in the fleet, there's a possibility of what's called remounting. The thing with these van ambulances is when they're done, you discard them. So they're not necessarily cheaper. They're usually $200, $250,000. They also- not necessarily cheaper. They're usually 200, $250,000. They also tip easier. The safety, the safety factor is extreme when you start talking about van ambulances compared to type one ambulances like we, like we operate. But the chassis is the big deal when you start talking type one. That's why we have these ambulances.
Okay. Is this a replacement for another ambulance in the fleet then?
It is. So this will be replacing what we're all gonna say is most likely Medic D. We do by letter and then we just keep them in service. But currently, we have five ambulances. In our experience, what it's been found is that we need about four ambulances to keep two on the road 24/7. Remind you guys that we put on about 1,100 miles in a week on each one of the ambulances, Medic One and Medic Two. So the rest of them have well over 200,000 miles. We do have one new one at 31,000. I have a new one coming in in September. And then this will be another one. So it's a constant replacement program with these ambulances. And the next thing we'll be looking at is, are we able to actually take this modular version, the box that you see in the back of the type one, and just put it on top of a chassis? But that's something to discuss with the new chief.
Okay. And when, when will we expect to take delivery of this particular unit?
This one will be 16 months, 16 to 18 months.
Okay.
And just doing due diligence, just was prepared for the question is, you know, just like we do everything with HGAC, they're not the only ones that we consider. Most of the other manufacturers, we're looking at three and a half to four years, which is not viable option for us.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Questions from the public? All right. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes. Motion is unanimous. Moving on to item, thank you, Chief. Moving on to item number 11. So this was my item discussion, possible action. I'll move that we, we move the RFP language as discussed in the, in the subcommittee.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? So the, the, the language is included in your, the redline copy was included in your, in your backup. Any questions on the, on our revisions? Counselor Fishbein?
Yeah, I, I thank the subcommittee for, for working on this. I just had a question. I'm looking at Roman III and it says, I'll just read the, the sentence, "The culture study intent is to get to the root cause of the issues between labor and management and would directly benefit the town council, mayor, and our new incoming chief by examining how we got to the present situation." And I don't know how, without, it seems like there's a lot of hiding the ball here, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, you're putting out a document to the general public and we're being asked, we're asking them to opine on a situation without telling them what the situation is. So how is one to know how they address that as a third-party consultant?
That's, I mean, that's a fair critique, to be frank. So I think, do you have a suggestion as to what would be a more appropriate, perhaps strike the, perhaps strike everything after chief by examining how we got to the present situation? I mean, I think the, the issue we're trying to address is there's clearly, you know, we have a sort of labor management issue currently in the fire department, right? And we've seen a lot of evidence of that. And so while I agree that I don't wanna spell that out in the RFP, the, I think the culture study is sort of an important, you know, ideally, they would talk to the, the chiefs, they talk to the, the rank and file and sort of come up with a, an idea of what the culture of the department is. Many representations have been made to us, you know, as far as the culture's good or it's not good. And it's sort of a hard thing as a part-time legislature that's outside of the fire service. It's hard for me to put my finger on, like, are there's, you know, people that say the culture's bad, is that, is that real? You know, like, where I work, some people complain, you know, people complain about work. And so is it, sometimes the concerns are valid and sometimes they aren't. So I'm trying to understand, you know, what's the, what is the root cause of these, some of the issues in the department?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Mayor?
The, the term "culture" can be construed very broadly to refer to things like gender and race. And that's clearly not what we wanna talk about. At least not from what I've heard. What we are, what I do believe is at issue are labor relations. So if you cut to the chase and, and, you know, take out a lot of the extraneous language and just refer to an examination of labor relations, I think it, it serves what you're seeking.
So I think culture runs a little deeper than just labor relations though, right? Because, you know, labor relations could be more about strategy and tactic. I guess what I'm, what I wanna know is what is the morale of the department? So maybe perhaps instead of culture, perhaps morale of the department would be more appropriate?
And then, I, I, you know, while we're talking about that, I think your objective is to, to, you know, look for objective metrics. And you're getting into the very subjective when you get into something like morale. So I, I just, my, my concern is that, you know, you create a conundrum for the person responding to the RFP or the entity.
So that's, I mean, that's a fair critique again. But my, I, I would assume that someone that has experience in this area, you know, in business, we do this kind of stuff all the time, right? Try to gauge the company culture. So my, my thought was that someone that was in this field would have an idea of what questions to ask to sort of gauge what the, what sort of the morale or the culture of the department was.
Can I, can I suggest, following the language, "The culture studies shall look at the relationship between labor and management, morale of the department, and suggestions for improvement?" I mean, suggestions for improvement is perhaps a, a bad clause because, I mean, the language is presented, presents a third party with a problem, right? So I think what the administration's saying is we need to identify if there is a problem and then, and then deal with it from there. So I don't wanna come to the table with a presumption for a third party that there is. So they should be looking at the relationship, how that may impact morale, and possible suggestions for improvement. I guess, I guess everybody's morale can be improved anywhere, you know, right?
Yep.
So is that...
Can you read your motion one more time or your, your language?
"The culture studies shall look at the relationship between labor and management, morale of the department, and possible suggestions for improvement."
I would accept that as a friendly amendment, but I'll take thoughts from the rest of the committee.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay. Then I'll accept that as a friendly amendment. Any other questions on this document? All right. So Mayor, the next steps, assuming that this passes, the next steps would be...
Have Purchasing publish the RFP, open it for whatever the standard period of time is, and then the proposals come back and the proposals are scored in accordance with the terms of the RFP. You'll get a matrix
Okay.
from Purchasing and the council will review it.
Thank you very much. All right. Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Marone?
I vote yes. Motion unanimous. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Fishbein, for your assistance on that one. Moving on to item number 12. All right. This, Mayor, this is your item. This is discussion of possible action for seeking proposals for development of senior housing to include affordable housing on the boathouse property. Good evening, gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have staff here to talk. But we've had, we've been approached several times over the, the past several months to talk about housing opportunities in town, both for the elderly and both affordable housing. With some discussions with staff, we've identified the possible use of the Choate Boathouse, the former Choate Boathouse property for this type of development. You know, it's adjacent to the senior center. And there are other benefits to the location, proximity to the train tracks, the train station, new train station, some other things to consider. It's the kind of project that can't, cannot occur without council approval. And so we just thought we would see what the council thought about this potential and how to proceed forward. Thank you.
Very good. Gentlemen, is there anything you'd like to add? Or if you, and if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself for the record?
Ah, yes. Kevin Puccini, town planner.
Don Crouch, economic development specialist.
So, yeah, I think the mayor covered the basis of it. I've been having requests over the last couple of years to try to bring senior housing in, trying to be more proactive with development. And senior housing, especially with EDC, has been wanting some kind of senior housing concept. So we've been having discussions with SCROG with these affordable housing discussions. It was brought up in those discussions with the senior center to potentially look at the boathouse property for development. As there is 12 Lake Street, which the town owns, that could be used as a passive use opportunity for recreation. It can't be used for development, but it can be used for, say, park-type use, trails. The Community Lake property also abuts, abuts the Choate Boathouse property as well. And there's also room at the, it's kind of hard to describe, at this SCOW senior center property abutting the Choate Boathouse property. That's relatively flat, has an access point, has an existing driveway. I believe in total, there's roughly three acres of developable land, I would say. It's also in proximity to the train station, as the mayor pointed out, obviously proximity to the senior center. And there's also proximity to the downtown apartment overlay district, which would allow multifamily dwelling units to be designated in the areas of the downtown. That was rezoned during the Parker Place development. So with all those positives, it's also a nice setting. It's scenic, quiet, possibly safe. We did take a, a tour of the property. We were always told it was undevelopable. There was wetlands. We believe there's a possibility for development. And I guess we just wanted to bring this to the council at the earliest stages to see what your thoughts were on it.
Counselor Fishbein?
So, you know, we, we got the boathouse property in exchange for the, was it Beaumont Road property, I think it was. My vision, and I, and I think I said it at that point, and I've had many discussions about this, was, you know, it's a very unique property as far as environmentally. And, you know, you've got STEM, which is right there. And I've talked to Chris Stone about, you know, having paths through this area, having stations where, you know, kids don't learn about plants and animals and, you know, that stuff that a lot of us, I think, learned about growing up. You know, I'm not against the housing for seniors, but I think we have an opportunity there to use this property to, to help our kids learn. And I know Chris has been, you know, supportive and, you know, that's, I was surprised when I saw this, because, you know, we've been talking about this for years. I think that's the appropriate use for this property. I mean, anybody knows the, the STEM headquarters is right at the back of the building that SCOW is using, right downstairs, you know? You walk right outside, you're there at this property that we're talking about. I think we could do some really good stuff with this property to help kids learn about, you know, science, technology, energy, or science, engineering, and math, right? Science, plant science, animal science, it's all part of that stuff. So, you know, the other thing is the government getting into the, the housing industry. I foretold this. We had these discussions, right?
We did. Well, I think the big thing is we'd, we'd be looking to, like an RFQ, find developers. We wouldn't get into the housing game per se.
And then with the potential of conveying the property for that, that use?
Well, I mean, you could do a 100-year ground lease. I mean, there's a lot of...
Well, we do a ground lease, we are in the housing industry.
We're not in the housing industry.
Okay. So I mean, we do have the housing authority, which is a whole problem in and of itself. But, you know, I, I have a different vision for this property. So I just want that to be known. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counsel Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few questions. So you kind of touched on it a little bit. What are, what are the ideas for how this would work? Are we talking about selling the land? You mentioned 100-year lease. How do we see that playing out?
I think at this point, this is just a conceptual, big-picture sort of pitch. We haven't worked out any of the finer details, obviously, because we wanted to bring it to council first, see what you think. It's kind of more of just a big-picture idea at this point. So it's only because I've been approached by the senior center, by a number of seniors in town. They would like to see a place where, you know, they can go. And I think if the town has the ability to develop it in a fashion that we see fit, I think that could potentially work. So we saw some opportunities there. We thought, why not?
Okay. I mean, I guess I would just, I would need to hear more. I guess I'm not for or against at this point, but we, there is a, there is a big push lately. We've been hearing a lot about where there's, there's a group of developers and realtors who are pushing very hard to try to do, you know, some housing. And, you know, in my opinion, kind of, there's, there's ways to get around certain zoning and those are being utilized. And a lot of people in town aren't happy about it. And I'm just, I'm wondering if this is just, you know, another, another way to kind of, to get the town on board. I don't wanna say special treatment, but there's, it's kind of a hot topic right now. So we're, I know we're hearing a lot about it up here. So I just wanna make sure that this isn't something that, you know, that people are upset that it looks like somebody got some sort of special treatment from the town. The, the other thing I wanted to ask about, which may be connected to this, I know a while ago, we had talked about connecting the linear trail to the senior center. And I think there was an issue with White Way that we, there was a, there's basically a piece of land that we don't own. Is that anything that's still on the table? Could that play into this? Or is that, has that gone by the wayside?
I don't know the background on that, but there, there are existing trails in there. So there probably is an opportunity. I don't know about going all the way to the linear trail, but that's something we can certainly look at.
Okay. Yeah, I know, like, way, when we, way back, when we first talked about ARPA, that was one of the things that was on, like, the initial list, was trying to connect that. Because it would be nice if we could, from the senior center all the way, you know, just go right around Community Lake would be nice. So it just made me think of it when we saw this, these parcels again coming up. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I may. So the issue with the trail is that it's adjacent to dry lake bed. And even though the lake bed is dry, we cannot put improvements in it. We're precluded. So we were looking for an easement to continue the paved trail behind the, the private property you're talking about. We were unable to get an easement to do that. Going back to the process, we're not identifying or giving preference to any developer. There was discussion about, you know, we're thinking through this. Do we, do we jump to an RFP? And when I think of RFP, I think back to Wood and Kaplan and how we got a great variety of proposals that were very different. And the council had to consider the proposals after they were all done and all presented. You know, Mr. Puccini mentioned RFQ. Perhaps we could hire an engineer and surveyor, do an RFQ for an engineer and surveyor to develop our own concept for the property. Have, have the council have its own and the administration have our vision for the property so that we are being much more specific when we go out to RFP or bid and reduce the controversy. Then, then you even the playing field for the, for the bidders. You know, I'll use the analogy of what stock cars racing used to be. It was, you know, they all had a V8 350 engine and it was how we could minimally distinguish the cars and drivers to, to win, right? So if we, if we tell them what the specs are, then you're, you're leveling the playing field for the developers and, and, you know, making a more fair process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm surprised you watch racing.
I'm surprised you watch racing.
Guess you don't know me as well as you thought you did.
I guess I don't. Councilor Lafferty.
Thank you. I don't love the idea, I don't hate it, it's not my preference. I think there are, it seems like it's such, such a good spot, there's better uses, that we have the opportunity to do with it. You know, if, if you came together with a whole, this is what it would look like, there'd be this many units, we don't even know what that number is, right? This is how it would connect to the senior center, like, all these people who live here, like, maybe then, I, I could be swayed, but if I wouldn't, if, if I was tasked with it, I wouldn't spend any more time on it, just because it doesn't interest me for that purpose. So, that's the cleanest and quickest response I have to that. Thanks.
Thank you. You know, I feel like the, the lack of affordable housing in town is sort of like the albatross we wear around our neck a lot. And so, I think this would probably be a good area for it, but I would not want to see this sort of minimum affordable housing. I'd like, you know, if we're going to do it, then let's have a whole affordable housing development and then, you know, because it seems like it's a good place and within walking distance of stores, you know, the senior center and the train station and stores and so on. So, you know, I think if we're going to do it, if we're, if we're trying, if we see affordable housing as an area we need to improve, I think it's probably a good place to put it. But, you know, then questions like, do we keep the land? Do we sell the land? Like, I, you know, my preference would be to sell it and have a developer, you know, do what they're going to do with it, you know? I don't want to be in the, the real estate business. Other thoughts? Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you. I, I was just curious if anybody has ever come forward to us with any other proposed uses for this? Has anybody ever approached the town? I know we haven't had the property for a long time, but I was just curious, similar to Councilor Fishbine's, you know, discussions with Mr. Stone at STEM and things like that, I was just curious, outside of housing, if anybody has ever come forward with anything that you're aware of? And if the answer is no, that's fine, I was just curious.
No, the only, I actually had multiple residents bring this up to me, so it's something I just looked into more, and that's kind of where it came from. And I was always told it was not able to be developed, but just a closer look at it, looks like there is some opportunity there, especially in proximity to the senior center and train station and whatnot. So, I haven't heard of, I know back in 2007, I believe, there was a proposal that a private developer put on it, but I don't know of any other uses off the top of my head.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Alson.
So, if we were to put affordable senior housing there, and forgive me, because I don't, I don't know the nuances of all the taxing situations, what is the land currently, like, if we own it, where nobody's earning, we're not earning tax on it, correct? So, if we were to lease it out, are we then, do we have, does the town have any income besides, like, the possibility of a hundred-year lease or whatever? Like, what is the...
We'd, we'd certainly be able to tax the improvements.
Okay.
But the buildings, the structures...
But what about, so is this an annual tax revenue generating capability? I'm just more, I'm, I'm more thinking of, like, you know, we have a relationship with Masonicare, where it's a, you know, reduced tax amount. I'm just wondering if it's like that, or is it, that's not what we're thinking? Okay.
I, I will say that with some of the potential for affordable housing development in town, some of the higher-density stuff, where there's the potential for public financing, we've been approached about a potential pilot, because the typical tax structure doesn't work for the financing. That hasn't come to fruition yet, but it's, it's not uncommon to make, you know, the margin of, of ability to generate management income. You know, these properties have to be managed, and if you're having affordable rents, the, the financing that's available requires you to seek all types of negotiation for reductions of obligations like taxes. So, it may be not, you know, the entire mill rate that they'd be looking at, they might seek to negotiate that, but that remains to be seen. It's, it's different with different developers.
Okay. And then, this, this discussion is basically just to say, we're interested in an RFP and, but if we don't like what comes across, we don't have to get, do anything? Okay. Just making sure that I'm understanding, because it seems like a, it seems like a good opportunity to me in some ways, and then in other ways, I'm, I'm trying to, like, weigh the odds, you know? And I'm all for giving people access. But, and, I mean, essentially, if we're not gaining anything from this property as of right now, something is better than nothing. But could it be something better than something?
Yeah, I think without having kind of that master plan and vision for the site, to be able to really show, hey, here's Concept A, here's Concept B, here's, you know, a pocket neighborhood with a park setting and a high-rise, different options without seeing it visually, I mean, it's, it's, I think that's where maybe an RFQ, get a, an architect and an engineer to, to lay out kind of, hey, this is what we're looking at, we'd probably have to have some workshops and some different things to get more public input, but, you know, I think that would probably be better than just like, hey, let's throw an RFP out there, let's, we'll take whatever idea. It's not really, we really want to narrow it down for a kind of for-profit entity to develop the land, so then there is that tax revenue to the grand list later on.
Yeah, and for me, it's not necessarily all about taxes or earning the maximum amount, but I think it, I think it makes sense. It certainly seems to make more sense than sticking it in the middle of lake neighborhoods that are not near town, the center of town. So, I, you definitely, I can support this, because I live in the land of data, so I'd love to get some back and then find out, find out more about what you guys would like to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you're seeking a motion then to...
Well, I, I could, we could ask for one, you know? And just one of the last things I want to say is, even if we do convey the property, we can, you know, preserve a portion of it with an easement for recreation, something closer to the lake bed that can, connects the property to the Lake Street property that we own, that we cannot develop. So, you know, there is the prop, the possibility that we do have passive recreational uses preserved, along with selling the land. So, that's, you know, I was hoping it would warrant a further discussion to see if, what the council's appetite is to flesh out, you know, some type of development for, before it, you know, gets away.
So, the next step in your mind would be an RFP, or would be, are we looking for funding for the survey and et cetera?
I, I think we would, we would look to, we'd ask for an RFQ to, to hire an engineer, surveyor, possibly architect, to work with the council, to see what the council's appetite is for the, the proposals that we would look for, for the property. Again, you know, defining, narrowing what the council wants to see if it's going to be developed.
Okay, so to that end, then I'll make a motion that the, that the administration prepare an RFQ for discussion at a later, at a later meeting to address the, you know, our thoughts and presented at this meeting? Second.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the motion? All right, we'll take a voice vote. Oh, I'm sorry, members of the public, anyone from the public have a comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a voice vote on this, on this item is moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Kindly note, Councilor Fishbine is opposed. Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay, moving on to item 13. Can I get a motion on 13, please?
I move, we approve the proposed Choate Bridge easement agreement.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion. Oh, kindly approach. Good evening. I know we saw you last meeting, but if you could kindly introduce yourselves?
Allison Katie, Chief Communications Officer, Choate Rosemary Hall.
William Wright, Director of Operations, Choate Rosemary Hall.
Thank you very much. Did you have anything prepared you wanted to start with, or you want to just go to questions?
Not this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions from the council? Councilor Fishbine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, I have the easement agreement before me, and I have the map, which, thank you, Janice, for the map. The, the width and breadth of this thing is, I mean, obviously, the easement is not to the heavens, right? So, what is the, the cap on height here? Is there a cap on height? I'm just...
Let me take a minute to look at it. I know that it's, let me find it, let me see if I can find it, unless you guys know what it is.
I mean, there's very general language about maintaining, utilization, that kind of stuff, right? And it's an easement, so they're not, we're not giving up ownership, right? They have a, a right to pass, right? And I'm just trying to figure out, under the language before me, what area are we giving this right to pass? And I couldn't tell from the map what the height was.
I know engineering looked at it, guys, I know it needed to be a satisfactory height for traffic. Let me just see if I can find it while you're talking here.
Because I know the bridge is 60 feet high at its apex. Is that, that's accurate based upon the map?
60 feet wide.
Oh, 60 feet wide.
So, it needs by state law, through DOT standards, to be a minimum of 17 feet high on a clearance for traffic.
Yeah, I, okay, so the underneath, a minimum?
Yep.
Right? And that's what I was playing with, because I don't think we're going to restrict an 18-wheeler from, are we? I mean...
No.
So, and what's the height on those?
Thirteen feet, six inches, or otherwise what the state would allow by a permit, a special permit for over height or over width.
So, the 17 and a half gets us there, right? So, if that's the opening, 17 and a half, and then you have structure, which we'll just say, six feet on, probably, that's probably like high, right? Four feet, maybe four to six feet for railings? And then you have people, right? So, max height, 30 feet? Is that what we're talking here? I'm just trying to figure out, you know, because I am getting a lot of calls on this, and just trying to constrain where we are, because I can't tell from the documents. But, I mean, if we set the height aside while we're looking at paperwork, the width that we're talking about, or the length that goes over the roadway, because Choate owns both sides of the, the street, is 30 feet, right? That's the spans that covers the roadway.
That may be the spans that covers the roadway, but for us to get outside the town's right-of-way, you know, to be on Choate property, like, completely outside the town's right-of-way, we're asking for 60 feet. We need to be at 60 feet.
Okay, I, I recognize that the structure was 60 feet, but you're saying that the roadway... So, I'm looking at the map that we got today, right, which shows Christian Street being a width of...
So, the right-of-way is, is 60 feet on, on Christian Street in that area, to include the paved roadway and what the town has for its own right-of-way on each side of the paved portion of the road. So, that's 60 feet.
Why does the town, I mean, I don't know. So, on either side of that road, the town has a, a deeded right-of-way of approximately 15 feet on each side?
Yeah, I don't know if it's deeded or not, but there are utilities there, there's electric in there, it gives the town the right to manage its own utilities.
Okay, so...
Like it does, you know, in anywhere else in town.
So, there's utility easements in there for the benefit of the town? Is that fair?
I am not sure of that.
Okay. Once again, I'm just trying to figure out, so the, the map reflects a proposed easement boundary of 30 feet by 60 feet, and then if we have the height, then we know what we're dealing with.
I did give it to the town engineer, so she didn't have any comments on it, so I don't, I think she's fine with that.
Okay, but for the purposes of, is 30 feet, is that a fair number? I mean, because the, the easement as drafted does not have measurements. It just, it just generally says that we are giving them the right to install, maintain, utilize, and...
Yeah, so this is a location sketch, so obviously, they have to actually design something. We have approval process of it, it has to get, you know, approvals, and so then, a more definitive legal description would follow that.
Okay, that's, and that's why we have schedules that are blank.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's fair, and that's where, perhaps that stuff could have, okay, so then, the next thing, and I think this came up at the last time we talked about this, is sidewalks. And now I, I see on this map, and there was no representation last time as the sidewalks being installed, maybe I missed it, but now we see proposed sidewalks, right? On the, well, at least on the right-hand side of the map. So, is that an addition to, or is that some sort of a, well, we really do need a sidewalk here? I'm just trying to, how did that come to be, considering we had no discussion of that last time? Like, people, I think people from the public had said, there's not going to be a sidewalk, right? So, now there is, or how did we get there?
So, I want to make sure that, Councilor, you and I are looking at the same map. Sure, if you can't see it from here...
This one says Figure 1 in the bottom right-hand corner.
Okay. Let me get to that. Okay.
Okay. So, on the right-hand side of that, you'll see, you see the, the bullet, the, the circle, the dark circle?
Yep.
And it says, and the, the highlight says, "proposed sidewalk," and that appears to be on the southerly side of Christian Street, meeting up with the, the walkway, right? And that appears to be an addition from last time we were here.
So, I wouldn't say that it's an addition. I would say that what you're looking at now are proposals as we continue to develop the concept of the bridge. These things are now coming into play. I don't think it's impactful, if you will, of the easement, per se, but as this thing continues to be, you know, fine-tuned, if you will, and then ultimately presented for approval to planning and zoning, they can condition, as you are well aware, certain things as part of the approval. So, sidewalks, I would say, are more than likely going to be included, but at the same time, the finished product may not require that.
Okay, I, I mean, I, just for my, I do appreciate the sidewalk there. It was one of the questions that I walked away in the last meeting with, you know, because it would seem to make sense. Let me just, that's all I had. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else in the council? Councilor Alson?
I just want to be pretty clear on this, just regarding the sidewalks. Sidewalks are on your property, right? The Choate property? So, I mean, you don't need an easement for the sidewalks. I understand that as this is a growing project, you, I just think the discussion naturally is turning to what is on either side of it, but I don't necessarily think it would make sense not to have a sidewalk there, so that's, that's really all I just, was, it was just for more of a point of clarification and the head nods have it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council? Councilor Reynolds?
So, just, I, I agree, the sidewalk is in part of the easement, but I believe, to your point, Councilor Fishbine, that the map is actually pointing west. So, what we're looking at is the east side, it's pointing east. So what we're looking at is the east side, it's pointing east, and that's a sidewalk that's coming from the north side of the road that's actually heading towards Rock Hill School. It's like, that's what the direction is in. I guess, uh, I, I, I guess I'll hold my comment for now. I, 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 alright, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? All councilor Tatta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After the last meeting, I was really kind of poring over the maps and everything, and I, I have to say, I feel like this is, at this point, a bridge to nowhere. I, I just, I can't see the justification of a bridge like this just to, I mean, it basically goes to nothing. So I do feel like there's more development coming down the road. And obviously, it's, you know, it's, you can do what you want on your property, you know, within regulations and zoning. But, you know, we, we hear from a lot of the, the neighbors and the taxpayers, you know, that are in surrounding properties, that, um, you know, they feel like there's a lot of overdevelopment going on. And we've received, you know, lists of projects that have gone on the past few years. You know, like I said, it's, it's up to you to do what you want on your property, but when I see something like this, that now, you know, it's gonna be happening on town, not town property, but in the town, just right-of-way, basically, the air rights that the town owns, you know, I, I just think that there's more going on here than, than just this bridge. The thing that kind of concerns me, that plays into this, is, um, all of the, the houses that Choate has, has now on, on Main Street, and a lot of the other, um, properties, you know, every time one of those is bought, um, it's removed from the tax rolls, it's removed from our citizens being able to buy them. And obviously, it's hard to compete against an entity like Choate, so we can't, you know, if Choate is willing to pay eight hundred thousand dollars for a house that's worth six hundred thousand, I mean, there's nothing really anybody can do about that, um, you know, Choate's gonna buy it. And I look at Hampden and what Quinnipiac did over the years, and, um, you know, I had a friend whose neighborhood was, it was all, you know, houses that they had, she'd grown up in, and they just were offering so much money that eventually Quinnipiac just bought the whole neighborhood, and they were, they were one of the last people to leave, and they tried to hold on, they just, you know, eventually they had to, they had to sell. And I just don't want to see that happening, um, and there's really nothing we can do to stop it. But that's one of the concerns that I think was brought to us, um, you know, kind of this, this idea of maybe some overdevelopment. And, um, you know, it's not directly related to this bridge, but I think it kind of is, because I think the neighbors were just very concerned that there's a lot going on when they see this bridge, and they see that it's kind of a, a bridge to nowhere, that maybe they don't know what's coming down the road. So I, I do, I sympathize with, with their concerns there, um, and, and certainly, you know, once, once I'm done, if you want to speak to that, I'm happy to hear, you know, the plans. One of the other things that was brought up, um, by someone in town was maybe having alternatives to this first, so, you know, could we do speed bumps? Could we maybe have a crossing guard during, you know, like when there's the soccer tournaments or the big events? And, um, you know, I drive, I live not far from there, so I drive those roads every day, and I, you know, I see the pedestrians, obviously, in the main intersection a lot, and on, um, you know, Elm and Main, and, and the Christian intersection. Um, but when I drive up Christian, I really, you know, I've lived in that area for, you know, years now, and I, I just don't see a lot of people crossing that road there. You know, and I made a point since our last meeting to drive that road more often, just to see, and I know it's the summer, so it's different, but I just don't see a lot of people crossing the road up there. Um, I see, you know, a problem at the lower part. So again, I just, I don't know if this is part of a larger project that we're just not hearing about at this point, but I would, I would love to hear if it is part of a larger project. Um, is that anything that, you know, you want to discuss tonight, or?
I mean, I'd, I'd love to respond to that, in a sense, and reiterate what I, you know, spoke about last time, which is, for a number of years, we have heard from our closest neighbors and folks who are coming through the property about pedestrian crossings, about parking, and about the flow of traffic through our campus. And this has been a long-term vision of trying to move large event parking, um, and access to that parking for our guests, which sometimes come in large quantities, and pedestrians kind of farther away from the most congested area at the center of campus. So, um, that's really what this bridge, you know, is, is, and can solve for, is parking, between parking, that isn't gonna be used every day, we don't invite thousands of people to campus every day. Um, the vast majority of our community lives right there, so, um, we're talking about pedestrians, you know, most of the time. But there are some big events, and that, that we host, and there are big events that we would like to host, and this gives us opportunity to park those folks farther away from the center of campus, move them safely across the campus to the facilities that many folks are interested in using, which are the athletic facilities, um, and our Colony Hall, which is right there as well. Um, this would service that, um, easily. And, uh, and again, kind of mitigate some of our safety concerns, um, our safety concerns and, you know, the safety concerns we've heard from the community.
Okay, so is, is the idea that that would be used for, if, if you parked in the, the current lot and you cross the bridge, you would walk down to where, for example, the new car hall would be? Is that, I mean, is...
That, that is potentially a pa- a path, yes, as well. I mean, Car Hall, you know, will welcome our daily guests, you know, our admission visitors, which are coming in dribs and drabs every day. Um, the parking there will be sufficient for that, that use, and probably support the pool, which is the, the facility closest to that, um, and off-hours. But when we're talking about all of the athletic facilities, and we have, you know, many fields, we get requests for tournaments, and, um, when the rink is being used, you know, we can't, we can't offer the fields to other groups, because parking is tight enough in that area. And the more folks we send back through Elm Street, you know, is closer to our neighbors. So that, that this is very much in response to some concerns that we've heard.
Okay, so it's, the parking, would you say this is mostly to accommodate athletic facilities?
Well, it's actually conveniently located on the side of campus where Colony Hall is, which we also use very readily, and, um, WSO is in there, you know, and we get a lot of requests for that. We hosted the, um, Connecticut Police Academy graduation recently, and we were really, um, tight on parking to help facilitate that event. But it's also on the same side of campus where we host reunion, we host commencement, um, and some of the big events that, again, bring a lot of external visitors and cars to campus.
Okay, yeah, it just, I mean, it seems like a long walk, you know, but...
We're used to walking a lot on campus.
Okay, okay. The other, um, let's see. So the other, you know, I guess kind of the elephant in the room, right, is that the, I know, obviously, for anything to, you know, legally happen, money needs to change hands, and the dollar amount that's in here is ten dollars. The compensation factor, obviously, has come up. You know, you... Not sure where to start with that. I think if anyone... I'm not so sure if anyone else in town were asking for this, if we would be allowing it so readily or for no compensation. Um, and I'm not blaming Choate for that, um, but, you know, it's hard to believe, if, if I owned, you know, a property across the street from me, and I said, I want to build a bridge on North Farms Road to go from my house to my property across the street, I think I would be laughed at, um, and even, or, and/or, you know, there would be some sort of compensation for that. Um, and so the fact that there's no compensation for this, um, I think, you know, I think it's, it struck people the wrong way. And on top of that, I don't think we'll even get any tax money for the improvement, as, as Choate is tax-exempt, again, through, you know, state law, nothing that you're doing wrong. But, but I think some people were upset about the compensation factor. So, you know, there's been a lot of talk about that recently, and I don't want to get into the whole, you know, I, I don't know that this ties into a pilot or anything, but I think if there were, I think I would like to see some sort of compensation for this, if this were to happen, um, and, you know, whatever that is, or we decide on, but obviously, there's some value to this, right? There's some value to Choate, to have this bridge. Um, so I think some sort of compensation, we should definitely consider, um, if we go ahead with this. Um, that is, oh, well, one more thing. There were, just so the council's aware, I don't know if anyone else received emails about this, the agenda was posted, um, not late, I don't want to say it was legally late, but the agenda was posted, um, I believe, Monday mid-morning. There were people that emailed me that were upset that they would have liked to attend, they would have liked to, you know, have known about this a little bit earlier, and they didn't. So I'm not sure if the council wants to potentially table a vote on this because of that, um, but the agenda was posted, um, yesterday, whereas it's typically posted, um, the Wednesday before the meeting. So, just so everyone's aware, I don't know if anybody else got emails about that, but that, um, just something for us to consider. Thank you, that's all for now, Mr. Chairman.
So is that a motion?
Um, I think I want to hear what the rest of the council also say about that first, um, and then we'll, we can always make that.
Onto Counselor Reynolds?
I was actually gonna make a motion that we table it, um, just in light of Counselor Carmody not being here, as well as Mr. Testa, as well as the things that you just pointed out in terms of people not being able to be here to speak. I also think that this is part of a larger discussion that we could have in terms of the overall relationship between the town. Um, personally, I think the bridge looks wonderful, and, um, I think it'll improve my property value, because I live right down the street from it, but I'm also, uh, I would, I would like to make a motion that we table this.
Second.
Okay, motion made, so now, uh, the conversation shifts to the motion to table. So, discussion on the motion. Counselor Tatta?
Thank you, um, yeah, I, I'm, I'm probably in favor of, of tabling it, um, just in light of, of the agenda posting. Um, however, I do think, you know, just out of respect for maybe the, the public that did show up tonight, I don't know if we, do we continue the conversation, but, but table the item, or do we, just, if we table, will we be closing?
Well, if we table, right, they were done with the discussion, so the public could speak about the motion to table, but we would limit the comments to the motion to table and not the, you know, the item at large. Yousa?
Yes.
Anyone else on the motion to table? So, I, I guess it's, the, the agenda was late, I mean, our commitment, we've always put the agenda out on Wednesday, because that's sort of what the council rules and how it's always been. Uh, it was my error, so it, it, the, it wasn't posted until, uh, Monday. The, again, as Counselor Tatta said, the legal requirement is twenty-four hours, so we met the legal requirements, we can certainly discuss it, uh, but it didn't meet sort of what everyone expected, so I'm not gonna stand in the way to table, um, but I'm, you know, happy to go with whichever direction the council wants to go. Anyone else on this? Members of the public on the motion to table? Sir, if you would approach the mic, please.
Madam Spizito, four sixteen South Main. I would hate for this to be tabled right now, I just waited about two and a half hours to have my chance to speak on it. Especially, uh, now that Mr. Reynolds brought up what would be discussed at another point, which would be the overall relationship between the town and Choate, which is why I'm here. And I'm also a school teacher, and I have like two days left of summer, so this is one of the ways I, I chose to spend it. I would love an opportunity, I'm stubborn, I can always come back, but, uh, I'd love a chance to speak now.
Well, you can give us your thoughts on it.
On the motion to table, or, or, um...
So the discussion, well, I mean, so the, right now, what's on the floor is a motion to table, right? So if you had thoughts on, you know, the sort of the general Choate issue, you know, the, the counselors have sort of expressed their general thoughts, so I'll give, you know, a little bit of, a little bit of, uh...
Yeah, I, I won't be long, um, but I'll, I'll give my general thoughts. So, first things first, um, I wanted to echo, uh, Ms. Tatta. So, Choate already has, where their soccer fields are, where Colony Hall, I believe, they already have a wooden set of stairs that takes you right to the crosswalk. You walk through the Paul Mellon Art Center, it takes you to the crosswalk, it's, it's really safe. So I couldn't agree more, uh, when she talked about that bridge to nowhere. It seems very redundant to me, but, that's my opinion. Secondly, when it comes to this ten-dollar fee, I was just, I was curious about how that figure was, was landed upon. I don't know if you guys had any answers? I- is it fair to me to assume that Choate's standing as a, a good neighbor contributes to that kind of small amount?
It's just a legal requirement to show that there's some consideration for it. It's not, it's not like a negotiated number, it's just part of a legal document where both sides are getting something, it's, it's a nominal consideration, so it's more or less a legal requirement, not a negotiated price of anything like that. Most deeds will say one dollar in other valuable consideration, that's what this is.
Right, um, nominally, why is that number so small? Like, I, I, oh, I thought, so, here, here's what I'd like to voice, and, and I'll make this short and sweet. Uh, as I said before, I'm an educator, I went to Lyman Hall, I did my student teaching there. I don't have much of a life, so I re-watched the YouTube from this last meeting, and, you know, I gotta be honest, I was pretty appalled, um, by the statements of the, the Chief of Communications, and there were some things that upset me to my core. And because it was her opening statement, I feel like it's fair to have someone to address some of the things that were said, uh, and I'll keep it under two minutes, if, if you let me, so... I don't want to misquote anybody, but the, the, Ms. Katie, I believe, um, is the name, said that in her opening statement, quote, "The surrounding community neighbors are of the utmost importance to us." Anyone who's engaged in any form of news, from ABC to Fox News, New Haven Register, New York Times, knows that couldn't be further from the truth. They do not care about our community. And we know this, we have a Covington Report, we have a Dane Pitney Report, we know these things. Since nineteen sixty-three to two thousand and ten, Choate had to hire two different law firms to investigate all sorts of allegations of sexual misconduct that were not reported to our community. So I found that, as an educator, offensive. Because if Lyman Hall had to hire two law firms, okay, and they found fifteen faculty members with substantiated allegations of sexual misconduct that are gross, the state would be down our throat, they, there would be no chance for them to expand as a school for ten dollars, no matter the reason for the fee. I found this, this shook me to my core, I couldn't believe what I was hearing. I could not believe it at all. And I'll, I'll wrap it up with, with this. This bridge would benefit, obviously, Choate students and faculty, but during those, that opening statement, it was also stated that the intention was to open it to residents as well, you know, I, I use Choate's track. And I believe the quote was to increase, quote, "accessibility to our campus." I don't know why anyone would want part of that. I want to contain Choate. I want to, I don't want them spreading, not at all. I mean, you heard the remarks that I made about the two independent investigations they had to make to cover up a century, half a century's worth of hiding sexual predators in our community. So here's my question, and I'll leave it with this, it's rhetorical one, you've given me the time, I don't expect you to answer, alright? And again, for anyone listening, the Covington Report, Dane Pitney, Google it yourself. With a strong drink, I really suggest. Here's my question, though. Why would this town want to reward and expand access to an institution notorious for fostering, then covering up, half a century's worth of sexual abuse? It is mind-blowing to me. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, anyone else? All right, seeing none, back to the council. Madam Clerk, what'd you kindly call the role on the motion to table?
Allison?
Can I, can I just, um, in the past, we have tabled two-something. So are we tabling to the next meeting? That has been what we have done procedurally, is that my understanding, um, that we would anticipate this on our next agenda?
Um, Mr. Reynolds, was that the intent of your motion?
I didn't have a finite time attached to it. If that is customary to table to the next meeting, then that would be fine with me, if that's what's customary, or if that's what's...
Okay, so then the motion is amended to table to the next meeting. Uh, was that Mr. Laffin has seconded?
Sure, it was.
Thank you, sir. All right, um, Yousa? Madam Clerk?
Allison?
Yes, yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tatta?
Yes.
Moron?
Uh, yes, motion passes. All right, so this item will be tabled to the next meeting, thank you.
I just have a quick question.
Please.
There were a lot of, like, uh, out-of-order allegations just made, um, and, you know, I, I understand that, residents can be upset and, um, things like that, but there have been allegations of abuse in many different areas of many different communities, and to throw out, um, I'm sure that we can all look them up, but I did, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to say because you weren't really given a response, or a time to respond, but realizing that I'm really taking leeway here, I don't know if you would like to say anything. like to say anything in response to that, I'm sorry.
Thank you, I was not prepared to, um, go down this line of conversation, but I will just say that, like any organization that has been around for a long time, we've made some mistakes in our past, and I will say that in regards to historical sexual misconduct, Cho Rosary Hall took it upon itself to, um, hire investigators and follow up on the deeds of the past, um, well beyond our legal and, you know, legal obligations, so, uh, anything that was covered in that is publicly available, and, um, we've been very transparent, um, and worked very closely in coordination with law enforcement, um, in each of those instances.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allison, you know, typically, um, you know, obviously, the council comports itself a little bit differently, but a member of the public, we would, I would generally give a little more leeway, you know, in those kinds of things, but I do appreciate your comments. Thank you very much, on to the next item. All right, item number 14 is a report out on the ARPA program and accounting of expenditures and balance of funds, um, this is from Counselor Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, so, uh, the impetus behind, uh, this agenda item was a, a conversation that actually, uh, Chairman Morone and I had in passing, where he said, "Hey, how do you feel about the skate park?", and then I said, "I don't know how much money do we have left in ARPA?", um, so that's really where all this sort of came from, it was a discussion around that, um, but really, and, um, and thanks, uh, to Mr. Senna for providing, uh, the financials, um, a lot of this answers my question, but I guess what I really wanted to kind of get at was sort of an understanding of how much money was left, um, how much money, uh, we can actually spend of what is left, um, what is the timeline for that, if we, uh, if we have to think about that, and then with an amount, what is left over in mind, to perhaps get to another item in the future of what we may or may not be interested in appropriating the money to, or suggesting, um, I know that there are things that are going to be coming up in the future with respect to technology, I know that there are things that are going to be coming up in the future, um, well, I'll take technology for, um, I'll take technology for, uh, for one as an example, because one of the things that became apparent during the pandemic was that places like our town, uh, weren't capable of working remotely, and so a lot of what has been looked into by the administration in terms of improving technology would actually provide that, and so, one of the things that I would be potentially interested in, in thinking about this money, again, and I'm not making any motions or anything like that, would be to sort of think about how can we actually use it towards something that COVID created, um, I've talked a lot about what we spent the money on up here, I approved earlier the money for the ambulance, I don't necessarily agree that we should be spending money on purchases like that, but I'm approving them, that's fine, but I think moving forward with the remaining money that we have, that we should try to be sort of laser focused, um, so with that being said, um, there was a report that was shared, um, and if I am not mistaken, Mr. Senna, I, it, it appears that we have about $1.5 million left, is that correct?
Uh, no, so we received $13,118,305.64, of that, $12,184,286 has been appropriated, that leaves $934,000 and change unappropriated.
Okay, so, all right, but so if we?
But that, can I?
Sure.
That being said, we've been trying to work with the department head, say, "Hey, you haven't spent this money yet, give me an update, give me an update", so there's 212, $924 worth of projects that the department head said, "I don't need that money anymore", reallocated, so that brings us to, using real round numbers, you got $1,147,000 that can be spent how you want to spend it.
Okay.
We need to spend it quickly, it needs to be legally encumbered by 12/31.
Of this year?
Yes.
Okay, so we have until the end of the year to spend about $1.1 million, okay, um, so the other question I had, um, in that $1.1 million, um, if we go up into the line items where we were looking at the, the, sort of like the business and the nonprofits, there was money that was appropriated there that didn't end up becoming, didn't get used, so is that in that $1.1 million, or does that, because where I got the $1.5, and I know that we just approved $300,000, but I basically took the available budget and subtracted the encumbrances from the available budget, and that's where I got to about $1.5, so I wasn't sure if the $1.1 plus the additional three and change that came from those other two makes up that amount?
So, the, the 300 was already approved, that was just a bid waiver for them to actually spend that money, so that was already in the numbers?
Okay.
Of the, um, of the 212, $924 that I mentioned, the only part of that is there was one not-for-profit that decided they didn't want the money, so there's $36,000 of, of that that's coming back, I believe, I don't want to speak for Janice, but I believe she's working very hard with the nonprofits and businesses that still haven't spent all their money to get them to spend it, or we're going to take it back.
Do we have a timeline that we're giving them?
Yeah, so, they have to have it spent by October 31st, and the reason we'd set it up that way was so that that would be sufficient time for us to have until the end of the year to spend anything that's remaining, so essentially, um, some of it, I am going to give, be giving back some of it, um, it's not a lot at this point, but, so there are several that haven't touched their grant, and I have been reminding them that is, that the deadline is coming, um, I'm at a point where anyone who hasn't finished, some of them have used some of it and haven't finished, and there's a plan, I mean, they usually tell me what they're doing, um, but at this point, I'm saying, "Are you using it or not?", kind of that, I'm kind of like, with some of them that haven't touched it yet, there's a few of them that I'm like, I'm kind, my patience is kind of wearing, but they do have until October 31st to get it done, so, um, and I, you know, I did have talked to a few who, there may be some small amounts coming back, uh, not coming back, but they're not going to get, because they don't, they're not going to need it, so, that's a constantly, something that's constantly in process, I'm always reaching out to them and saying, you know, reminding them of what they need to do, so, um, particularly the large nonprofits been pushing for that, so, there will be some, it's not going to be a significant amount coming back.
Thank you, and, and, um, just anecdotally, being part of the ARPA process and reviewing all the applications is actually really rewarding, I got to meet people like Counselor Regan, personally, it was really nice, the people that you all pointed up, and Counselor Fishmine, I got to know as well, um, it was a rewarding experience, but I understand the volume of work that you had in terms of the amount of stuff that you had to go through, so I, I, I can appreciate that, I was also quite impressed that the Y spent all of their money down to like 16, 69 cents or something, isn't it?
Well, then they got to give that back to me.
Okay, um, so, and, and just one point, uh, just from my own, so it has to be allocated by the end of the year, but it doesn't have to be spent, correct? Committed, yeah.
It has to be committed, so we would have to have, you know, a purchase order or a signed contract in place that it doesn't have to, we don't have to pay the bill, but we have to have intent.
Right, okay, all right, um, thank you, I, that was basically what I had on that, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, so if it needs to be committed, that means that the, we're at the 11th hour now, then, we need to know where we're going to spend this money, like yesterday, okay, um, Counselor Laffin?
Thank you, um, and I know we're, it seems like we're way behind in trying to talk about what to do with that remaining money, it's been several months, you know, I've, I mentioned a few times, I know it was the summer and people were away and things like that too, but if October 1st is the final they need to spend by, is that enough time for us to meet, like immediately following with the final number, with ideas, to start going, we only have until the end of December, right?
So, the, the, um, businesses and nonprofits have to spend it by October 31st, the town has till 12/31 to have it committed.
Right.
So then you'll know if they haven't spent it.
That's what, yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
That will be, yeah, you'll know what you have left from that.
I mean, I don't know if it's worth trying to meet before that in September, or just meeting in that first week in October, um, probably in a special meeting, I don't know if we follow his ordinance again or something like that, um, throwing that out there, but I think if we don't start trying to put some down on paper now, then it's just going to be a mess, more than it already is.
I mean, I agree 100% with that, and I actually think, so we have a potential $3 million, um, technology project, which is sort of what, uh, Mr. Reynolds identified, I mean, I think we could also caveat it, this is not a motion, because, you know, not the right format, but we could also caveat it that any additional funds, you know, goes toward that project, where they have a sort of a, a standing list of items to work on.
Well, I'd rather not blow the whole thing on, on technology, I'd rather talk about the different ideas, I mean, I know Counselor Testa had to leave, but he would probably be like throwing his stuff all over the room if he found out we talked about just spending on technology without the discussion that has been promised for, for two plus years.
I would like to blow it all on technology.
I would not.
But, uh, well, uh, let's plan on having this on an, on next agenda, uh, on an upcoming agenda, and we can bring your ideas, and we can, because we have to, you know, put the?
That's what I'm saying, but I think we actually need to do it, because we keep saying we're going to do it, of course, we were going to put it on an agenda, and it, it doesn't happen, and now it's, it's August.
No, that's fair, actually, this has been on several agendas in this term.
But not with what our projects can be.
I'm sorry?
But not with what our projects can be, we keep, the administration, this administration and the previous administration come forward with?
I'm going to take a bit of exception to that, because the last time I put this on the agenda, it was bring your ideas, and we had like two ideas, right, and there were sort of these like grandiose, like we should do a thing, without naming the thing, so I'm, the next time it comes on the agenda, we have to have like a specific project that you want to do, well, actually, Counselor Allison had a project, the library project, but that was kind of the only one that wasn't like, you know, sort of in the ether, so...
Because I believe we talked about then having like a workshop style meeting to, to flush all that out, that was the, that's what came out of that discussion.
Okay, I mean, we could have a work styles, works.
If you want to do it in a full meeting, that's fine with me too, but?
Either way, I mean, I, I think we just need to come up with where the money needs to go, we've spent so much of this money on, see now you're going to get me on my soapbox, but we spent this so much money on sort of all these groups in town, right, the sort of politically connected organizations, and so I just feel like, you know, technology is something that we're going to have to pay one way or the other, so do we bond for it, do we take it out of the taxes, or do we spend this money on it, so it would be nice if we did something for the people of town, you know, with the money that was allocated for the people of town, as opposed to sort of the road we've gone down already, and now I am on my soapbox, Counselor Fishmine?
First of all, Janice, I want to thank you, um, I mean, Counselor Reynolds said it, but, you know, you have your regular job to do, and somehow this fell on your lap, and you've been, you've been there all the way, so I just, I really much appreciate all of that, you know, I don't want to end up where we sort of got with the last administration, because we need to work together on this, right? So, I would suggest that on our next council agenda, I don't know if the mayor is prepared to perhaps throw out some suggestions that, you know, and, and maybe that would spur something, because certainly, you know, we're going to need to work together with the administration, if you want suggestions, if I may, we will have them, um, and, and just, you know, while we're talking about theorizing about projects and the like, if you're talking about a construction project, it really needs to have been shovel-ready already, i- if, you know, if money's going to be committed by December 31st, um, because if, if you're designing something from scratch, I don't think that's a realistic timeline, but, um, thank you, thank you, the, the administration will certainly, um, look at what, what needs there are, what relate to this type of spending, and will come up with suggestions, and, um, happy to certain, certainly engage the council in discussion about the variety of projects we can propose for expenditures. So, I appreciate that, you know, my concern, though, is, you know, we have talked about a skate park, right? So, if, if what I'm hearing now is that we can't even talk about a skate park because nobody's done any drawings, nobody has any, uh, any specs, um, is that what I'm hearing? We can talk about it, but the question becomes, you know, are we going to be able to design it and find a location for it and have a contractor hired by December 31st? I mean, that's, really, the money has to be contracted for by December 31st. Well, does, I guess that's the question, because in answer to one of the other counselors' questions, I mean, can we just appropriate it for the project, is that, or we got to be shovel-ready, like you just said? I mean, I say shovel-ready because that's a practical standard, you, because by December 31st, the money has to be committed, it has, you have to have either a purchase order or a contract, um, so that, you know, a purchase order or a contract means you've identified a contractor, so in that time, we'd need to identify a location, have a design, and go out to bid on all that stuff. Okay, I, I appreciate that, I, you know, I made a suggestion for the next agenda, and certainly I would be, um, interested in, in having that discussion at our next meeting, at least to have the preliminary discussion, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Tadda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, so, I'm, I don't know why this is a shock again, because I sent a spreadsheet probably three years ago, um, and I just pulled up again with a list of all project ideas, um, I'll rattle them off again, because I don't know why all of a sudden we say we don't, we never heard this, or this, this didn't happen, so we had outdoor dining on the list, um, for sidewalk patio decorative barriers, we just changed that ordinance, got rid of that, um, again, this is three years, probably three years old, two years old here, sidewalk repairs townwide, uh, fixing the Center Street cemetery wall, online bill pay, community pool park, Tyler Mill Trails and Bridges, a skate park, park and pavilion upgrades at Town Parks, splash pads, garden road park or parking for a splash pad, Wooding Kaplan Law upgrades, Town Hall refurbishment, connect Community Lake Trail to the senior center, which we were talking about again tonight, Community Lake Park improvements, work from home capability at Town Hall, pension check direct deposit, historic railroad station and park slash gazebo, underground electric in the downtown area, downtown property purchase, um, the police station, obviously, this is, list is old, traffic lights, uh, decorative signage for vineyards, the facade program partnership, and a YMCA pool partnership, so these have all been on the list since, you know, day one, um, obviously, now, you know, we're not, we're not doing the, you know, we're not, mo- most of what's on this list can't be done now, because we're not going to have time to embark on these projects if we need to have the money, um, you know, if we have to have this done by the end of the year, but, um, you know, we did have this list the whole time, and we decided to, you know, give the money to our friends instead, so $13 million is gone, basically, and we didn't do any of these, um, and now it sounds like it's too late, so, um, this isn't, you know, I don't want the, you know, I don't want to say like, we, we, you know, we dropped the ball, or we didn't have the ideas, or we didn't know, we had the ideas, we've had this spreadsheet since day one, we just chose not to do these, um, so, if the technology aspect is the way we go, because that is a project that's underway, that we can just pay for right now, um, I would be for that, because I think that that's something that the taxpayers are going to have to pay for, and if we can use ARPA, then the taxpayers don't have to pay, and it certainly fits into the, um, the COVID ARPA, um, you know, the, the spirit of ARPA, so, um, I would, I would be okay with that, if that's what it comes down to, but if we are going to talk about this again at the next meeting, I'm happy to send this spreadsheet again, um, but like I said, the majority of things, which we have all talked about that were on here, um, probably can't get done at this point, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You know, with respect to the entire council, this is the topic that we've talked more about in the past three years than any other topic, right, we've spent hours and hours and hours talking about ARPA, so then to get to this juncture and people to be, you know, for folks to be like, "We don't know what's happening", or, you know, we, like, "We don't understand the process", or "We have, you know, why isn't anything happening", it's just, it's kind of like the, it's like the, the trap of, like, sort of the legislative branch of government, right, it's like you talk something to death, and then you complain that you didn't talk about it enough, so, we'll put it on the next agenda, um, and hopefully we can come to some kind of a resolution, because the, the clock is ticking on this. On to number 15.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you, I will, I'll combine motions for 15, 16, and 17, um, so I move that we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1-225F and 1-206B to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford, and also, oh, you want them separate motions?
Yeah, no, you can pull them all together.
Uh, and also, to go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1-225F and 1-206B regarding pending foreclosure matter of Town of Wallingford versus LaVoy, and to go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1-225F, 1-206E, 1-209C, and 1-210B10 regarding the GOT space agreements.
Second, all right, motion made, second discussion on the motion?
I've been sitting here a long time, I got a problem with the town.
Wait, okay.
I don't want to stop your executive motion, you can go. You can go do.
Wait, what is, so what's the context of your?
I live out on sixty two Williams Road. My name's John Room. Land front, front on my land belongs to the town. Two hundred and fifty feet of trees there. They're all dying. Some snapped right off at the base, right with the ground. Just standing there, fifty foot trees. They could go in the road or they could come on my property. Somebody could get hurt walking by, a vehicle get bumped on, the wires will go down. I don't like to be here. It's the last place I want to be. What I'm telling you, I want some people to go out there and see me and look at the situation. I don't want the town public works out there. I want you people out there to see what I'm talking about. They dropped a tree in my yard. They picked up everything near the road and they called me up and said, we're just going to your property line after they dropped the tree. Okay?
Okay, so I'm not trying to cut you off, but this has been a very long meeting, right? We have the public question answered at the beginning, but if you want to leave your information with-
Hear that, well?
If you'd like-
You're too good.
Well, if you'd like to leave information with-
Talking sloth up there.
Okay, if you'd like to leave your information with the clerk, I'd be happy to speak with you tomorrow and see about if any counselors want to come visit your property and take a look. I'm happy to take a look.
I'd like a couple of people to come out there to see.
Okay. Could you leave your information with the clerk?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. All right, back to our, um, motion was made and second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
All right, I will call this meeting back to order. Do we have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
All right, motion being seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the law department to act as discussed in executive session regarding the matter of Town of Wallingford versus Lavoy.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to number 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
You want that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were supposed to authorize...
Yeah.
Oh, if you want to authorize that action, okay. You can do that, I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the law department to act in accordance with our discussion in executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion?
Good.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the law department to act as discussed in executive session regarding the matter of Town of Wallingford versus Lavoy.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the law department to act on the formal termination of the Gott space agreement as discussed in executive session.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion. That is discussion regarding the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in public session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no actions required on number 18 unless there is discussion.